I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Radley. Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow.
Here.
Councillor Pishanary.
All right, and Councillor Pishanary is excused for the evening. We have two items this evening. First item is wastewater and stormwater user fees fiscal year 2022 through 2023, and it is Kathy Bishop.
All right, it's Catherine and Matt, and I, this has worked well in the past to have two of us present, so I think we'll continue with that. And welcome, Mayor and Councillors. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We're doing a little PowerPoint. We'll be brief. Otherwise, we'd be in there in person, and then we'll be there next week in person as well. Let me share my screen, and we'll get started here. Can you guys see that?
We can.
Excellent. Okay, um, so, welcome again. With me is Catherine Bishop, Environmental Services Program Manager, and I know you know me, the Environmental Services Division Director. Okay. So, you've seen this slide deck in the past, so we'll run through it a little bit quicker than we have in years past, but if there's any questions, you know, let us know. Ultimately, we're looking for council's feedback tonight to take to next week to a public hearing to hold for user fees for wastewater and stormwater user rates for the city. So, the objectives tonight are to talk a little bit with you about the revenues, our systems, some of the challenges that we're facing, along with some of the regulatory requirements that we're dealing with, and then ultimately, you know, real brief on the programs and then discuss some new options with council.
Revenue goals are something that we're looking at here. It's provide resources for operations and maintenance programs, to also fund the capital improvement program, maintain debt service requirements, and increase capital reserves while maintaining fiscal health and a strong credit rating.
So I think council's seen this slide the last several years, but we'd like to show it every year just as a reminder that these systems that we're dealing with are large and are complex. They have an asset value of several hundred million dollars when you look at them collectively. And with respect to the wastewater system, there's two components. There's the local conveyance component, and there's the regional MWMC treatment component that occurs out of the treatment plant on River Avenue. We have over 240 miles of pipelines for our wastewater system, a number of pump stations the city owns, and then on the stormwater side, we have a number of facilities, over 6,000 catch basins, over 200 miles of pipeline, and a number of ever-growing water quality facilities that we're having to maintain and operate. The user fees that we collect for these systems are the sole source of our operating and maintenance costs for these systems, and they're a large component of the capital cost as well. A number of challenges that are associated with, you know, quote-unquote, paying for clean water, those are listed here. Just briefly, we have fixed operating costs that we deal with regardless of whether or not people are, how much people are using the system. Our infrastructure is starting to age. We have some of our portions of our systems that are 50 or 50 to 100 years old. We have capital costs that are ongoing, and then regulatory requirements that we need to meet. There's new permits, and then there's a, there's a continued permitting requirements that carry over from previous permits. Talk a little bit about that in a second. Inflationary pressures, I think everybody's aware of right now, basically that impact all aspects of our system, whether it be personnel or operating costs or M&amp;S or capital. And then although there's been an influx of federal funding recently, overall, there's been a significantly reduced amount of federal funding available for utilities in the last several years going back to the 1980s. And then we do have debt service obligations that we need to meet for previous bond savings. Just quickly on the stormwater permit and wastewater permit, so these do contain the discharge reporting requirements that we have to adhere to and maintain with DQ. The city's stormwater permit was, it's a new permit. It was quote-unquote, a "be issued permit" that we accepted after some litigation and a lengthy process with DQ in June of 2021, and that lays the foundation for our regulatory requirements moving forward for the next three and a half years. On the wastewater side, we are currently in negotiation with DQ for a new permit. This is a permit that's been needed for some time. It's been since 2006, when we last issued a permit, and we've been operating under a wastewater permit that's been on extension since then. We have just received the applicant review draft for that permit a few weeks ago, and we expect public review comment to happen in the next month, a month and a half, and then a final permit to be issued this summer. That permit is going to contain a number of complex treatment requirements, mostly impacting the MWMC, although Springfield and Eugene are both named on that permit. And this permit is really, again, lays the foundations for the requirements needed to be met for both the local and the regional programs. We won't cover these programs in detail, just to say that these are the programs, some of our programs that are funded by user fees. I just want to put a plug in for the calendar on the right. This is our 2020 Canines for Clean Calendar. We just got done soliciting for people to submit photos of this year's dogs for the 2023 calendar, and we received approximately 150 submissions, and that's, we're currently in the process of judging those entries and getting ready to gear up for the calendar for next year. So that's one of our, one of our main tactics for education and outreach with respect to our stormwater program. Transition real quick and talk about the local wastewater system. This slide shows a couple of operations staff maintaining that system in a manhole and then into a cleanout behind the sidewalk here at the edge of the right-of-way. So, before we get to options, just a few great factors that impact the wastewater system. Obviously, we've sold bonds in the past, which those sales have influenced our wastewater rate factors, number of capital investments that we have made and are going to make in the future with respect to our capital program. The amount of water customers use actually impacts our rates, so the more water-efficient fixtures that get put in, or the more a business is using more water or less water impacts those rates and how we set those. And then our local rates are flow-based here in Springfield, so I just wanted to point that out. With that, I think Catherine will take over a conversation on where the rates are and then where they're headed.
So this chart that we're looking at here is looking back at currently adopted rates as of January 15th. So these are the rates looking back, and we, this is for the wastewater fee comparison. And what we look at is we look at 5,000 gallons of water or 6.684 units, and you can see where the average is in the middle. Right to the right of that is Springfield, just below the average, and over to the far right is Eugene. So you can kind of see where we fit in. We usually try to be within the average or slightly below average because we like to have rates on an annual basis that are moderate and incremental. So this is where we, where we fit in right here for the year looking behind us.
Catherine, if you can hang on for a second. Leonard, did you have a question?
It's actually relevant to the rates that she's talking about right now. Well, I'll wait near her presentation. Thanks.
Okay. And then AJ, could you maybe resize us so we can get the rest of the council in case? Thank you. Go ahead, Catherine.
Okay, next slide. And this is just moving into stormwater services. You can recall the upstream art, and then we also have the cleaning of the ditches. And the next slide. So now we're looking at the stormwater fee comparison, and as you know, that these are pretty much a fixed fee, which is very different than the wastewater, which is flow-based. And you can see over, on the, the third to the left is Springfield at $15.62, and Eugene is just right to the right of there. And again, these are the rates that are already adopted. And, and that's where Eugene and Springfield are in this process. There's a number of permits that have gone out to, to communities having to do with stormwater permits, and we'll see over time how those change for those communities. But we do have a couple of proposals in our next slides.
I'd just add to this slide. It may answer a question that might be out there, but some of these communities to the right in here, like Albany and others, have programs that are much less mature than Springfield's. And in fact, Albany didn't even have a stormwater permit until, you're just last year, and that was due to the size of the community, where they're located, and the fact that they just slid under the threshold in the previous permit round when the census was done. But these programs are now, and they're going to be catching us in the coming years. But due to the fact that we've had a permit for so long and the maturity of our program, that's one of the reasons why you see the numbers here.
And this is a, looking back during the pandemic and the fees that were adopted, you can see that in 1920, overall, the, the cost for local wastewater and stormwater resulted in a 2% increase. And then we did have a flat fee for 2021 during that adopted period of time, so they remained level. And then in the most recent year, there was a overall 2.8% increase or a dollar and nine cent increase. We have a couple of options. This is option one. This is actually the higher rate change. It actually results in 3.2% or $1.33 when combined with the local wastewater and stormwater services. Now, that does take into consideration that not every customer has the same amount of wastewater in terms of their flow. And so this is looking at 5,000 gallons, but we do know that in Springfield currently, our average for single-family residential is 4,300, and so it would be less than this, but we, we do compare with that 5,000. And so this is the higher option. And next slide. What we're recommending is option two. You can see that that results in a 2.8% over the wastewater services and the stormwater services that are local, and that demonstrates about a dollar and 12 cents monthly increase. Now, that assumes 5,000 gallons, so if it was 4,300 gallons, it would be less. But then again, there's also customers with larger homes, maybe more people in the household that could have a higher bill as well. Next slide. So we're looking at two choices. Option one, which would be the 3.2% or the proposed option two, that would be 2.8%. And then this is the regional wastewater, MWMC. These fees were adopted earlier. Again, it was 3.5% resulting in 98 cents monthly. And it looks like there might be some questions.
Leonard.
Yep, thanks, Sean. And thank you, Matt and Kathy, for the presentation. I did want to ask, you're recommending the lower percentage of the billing for the, for wastewater. So the additional 0.4%, what would that be used to fund if we were to vote for the higher rate?
Well, actually, you know, we're in a pretty good position because we have, right now, what we have is we have the local wastewater that's going to be developing a master facilities plan. They're going to be starting barking on this. It'll take a number of years, and we have adequate reserves for that. We don't, we don't foresee, I know you think, you're probably thinking about inflation, but we do have adequate reserves in the local wastewater program. And then with the stormwater services, those fees are pretty much fixed. They're not flow-based, so the single-family residential is the same price each month. But if you're in a large industry that has a lot of impervious surface, you also kind of have a fixed fee because it's based off of impervious surface on the side. So we're in a pretty good position because we do have annual increases that are moderate and consistent. So.
Yeah. I can add to that as well. You know, we, it probably, at this point in time, we go to, we go back into the reserves, we've had our reserves a little bit. We're in the process of recruiting for a position to basically dig into this area a little deeper in the coming year. There's a whole conversation that we want to have internally on how much money we're taking each year and transferring to capital, how much money we're transferring to operational, the operational part of the program as our systems age, and we need to have, and we, we add more infrastructure to the city, and we need to do more respect to operations and maintenance. So it would position us maybe a little better once we had those conversations. But then again, the direction we've gotten the council in the past, and what we tried to adhere to is to have small incremental rate increases over time that are at or below inflation, and we, you know, our customers have kind of come to depend on that. It's like a, I was mentioning it somewhere earlier today, but it's kind of like, it's not necessarily like a deferred comp plan, but if you're putting money in every year, whether you're buying a lot of your money or not, you're not buying as much. People have come to really appreciate the small incremental adjustments over time, and they know what they can expect in their bill, as opposed to looking at, you know, doing a, an eight or nine percent one year, and then nothing for a year or two, and then back to an eight percent. We tend to get a lot of negative feedback in that, when we take those types of actions with our, our billing specialists here at the counter.
I, I had never heard the phrase "impervious services," or if I had, I forgot. Could you explain what those are?
Right. So you know, if you have a large industry, or if you have a church, for that matter, that has a lot of asphalt in their parking lot, has a large footprint of their building, the drainage, the stormwater is, the, the asphalt in the building is considered impervious surface because water can't drain through that, through that area. So the charges are applied to the hard surfaces that don't have drainage.
Okay. So there, you don't anticipate any kind of service interruption or failure or any lesser services being provided as a result of a lower percentage?
Correct. And, and one thing I'd like to add is that we do have revenue bonds on the stormwater services and also on the local wastewater. And the local wastewater is really trending downward. We're coming out of a longer period of time that it was, was more years. We have about five or six more years, so we're trending down. And then we, then, then what will happen at the end of those four or five years is we'll have all of a sudden additional money that, that was used to pay off the, the revenue bond. So we're kind of trending downward there.
Very good. Thank you. I, I'm comfortable with the recommended plan. Thanks.
Corey.
Thank you. And my video is being a little glitchy, which is why you see me and then you don't, but I'm here. And you just answered one of my questions, which is around the timing of the, the bond, so I appreciate that. And I know you covered this. I just want to just like hear it again. Just that because we're in such a kind of unpredictable inflationary time, and it's, you know, we look at these things kind of in isolation. We're like, okay, we're looking at waste and stormwater, and then, you know, but, but that's not how people experience it, right? People are experiencing waste and stormwater, and then they're experiencing their utilities, and then they're experiencing all these other things going up. So, and I know that we're kind of looking at the incremental. So I have to, I'm getting to a question really, like, I think that there's, there's two things I'm thinking about. One, are we really like kind of thinking about that ecosystem and being like, okay, we need to adjust for inflation and just be wary of what people can afford to pay? And the flip side of that is if we do reach some really high inflation, not wanting to like have to play catch-up, right? So I know it's like forcing us to kind of be like, I don't know, like look into the crystal ball, but I just, and I know you guys touched on a little bit, I just want to just, just a little more so that I feel like, yes, we've done our due diligence and we're in a confident place.
Yeah, I think it's, I tried to, I didn't explain it very well, I don't think, but earlier, people have, have gotten used to the, the smaller incremental rate increases over time. So there's times when we're doing a 3% rate increase and the inflation might only be 2%. And we have a pretty healthy reserve right now of both funds, but there's also times like right now where inflation is higher. We're still keeping with that same philosophy. It's kind of like when you think of a, whether you're managing your own, your own, the food compensation or stocks or whatever, but you, you're buying, you're buying at the same rate over time, and in the end, when you look at it, you know, it averages out, but if you, you don't want to try to play it as the market's changing because what happens, and sorry, if we're, we're at an eight or nine percent, and usually what happens is somebody, you know, we, either people complain really hard about doing that eight or nine percent, or we end up doing something that's less than that, and we don't make up what we need. But then when times are, then when, then when times aren't as good, we go with a zero, we end up being behind. And so really, this kind of, you know, small incremental philosophy over time tends to position us better in the long run, and it also tends to give our customers something that they can count on and know that, what to expect on a year-to-year basis when they're receiving their bills.
Perfect. Thank you.
So Matt, I guess going back to that same point that, and I think every, it's on everybody's mind, by adopting the, the proposed option, are we setting ourselves up where, you know, next year's going to float around, and the, the guidance is going to come back at six or nine percent? Like, is there a headwind out there that we don't know, that, that we haven't sort of taken into account that we already know about?
Oh, yeah, and you can answer that. I don't think, I think the answers were, no, we're not, not doing that.
Okay, so. Go ahead, Catherine.
Well, we do have pretty good reserves in both of these funds, and we do have, you know, bond payments that are trending down and that we're going to come away from within a few years. And we feel really comfortable with, with the proposed.
We do have, you know, increasing operational needs, and we have a, a capital program that's going to be needing to be implemented. But as Catherine mentioned, we have healthy reserves on the, on the storm, on the wastewater side, the, the new permit. Most of those requirements are going to be on the, on the regional side. So on the local side, we're not having a bunch of unanticipated work that we weren't planning. This can result in an additional need. That said, we need to figure out internally what's the best practice for regenerating our capital and our operational needs, but within the construct of the highest level where we're at with our dollars, I think we're in pretty good shape. On the stormwater side, there are going to be some additional things that we need to consider, but we're in a position with, as Catherine mentioned, given that some, that rate's fixed based on, based on, you know, the amount of runoff that comes off a site, it's pretty much fixed. It's not, it's not a, you can't control it with, by turning the tap on and off. We're also in a pretty good position there, I think, as well.
Okay, um, so we, we would expect next year to see a guidance between probably two and four percent, right? Like, it's, it's really the consistent, the, the part that's kept us in this place is the sort of fiscal stewardship we've, we've taken up till this point of constantly just taking those gentle adjustments has created an environment where we can absorb this much inflation.
Yes, and we are, this is the projections for the next couple of years on the current option.
Okay.
Okay, three, two and a half to three and a half. The previous option is around three to three and a half, so those are our current projections.
And I'm.
You know, three, three years from now, there could be something that changes in a new permit that would put us in a little different place.
No, I think this philosophy has paid off for, for, for the council. I mean, that's what we're seeing in the rate, in the rate increases, right? So I'm looking, I'm comfortable with the, with the recommended option, and I'm looking around, seeing some head nods. Does anybody have any other questions before we, before we go to the next item? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to pause for station identification while we're still getting, getting the next presenters up.
I believe I'm next, Mary Olson.
Are there? Yep, Sam, we're going to turn it, we're going to turn it over to you. Take us away.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Councillor. My name is Sam Kelly Patroki. I'm back again this year, following Matt and Catherine with the Santa Pac fees and updates. There's a slight doubleheader in this one. Aaron, my partner from Santa Pac, is going to go first and talk about the new food waste in the yard debris cans, following, oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Stare, yes.
No, it's okay, Sam. I, I just wanted, I wanted to ask the mayor if this would be a good time to recuse myself from these proceedings.
Oh, that would be a perfect time.
Okay, I have represented members of Santa Pac drivers and yard employees, and as a result of my interest in the operation of that company, I'm recusing myself from these proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. So the first half of this will be a presentation on the food waste and the yard debris cans, bit of an educational overview, how the program will work. And in the second half, I'll hop back on and go over the rest, all the fees and updates and the CPI. So trying to get too into the weeds on costs just yet, wait till I come back, and then we can dig in them and have some fun. But I think with that, Aaron has a PowerPoint slide, and if you want to take over, please feel free.
Great, thanks, Sam. Hello, Mayor, Council and City Staff. Thanks for having me on. My name's Aaron Donnelly. I'm with Santa Pac. I'm going to share my screen here just to share you guys, with you guys real quickly about yard debris and food, potentially food waste in the yard debris. So hopefully, we'll all see that. So just quickly, the, the current system was implemented in 2008. It's a curbside 65-gallon yard debris can picked up every other week. It's a subscription basis, so you're not, it's not mandatory, and about 40% of Springfield residents do subscribe to it. We use it as a qualifying element to the city of Springfield's opportunity to recycle requirements, which we submit for the city every year. So once you sign up, there is a one-year commitment. If there's a, there's $25 cancellation fee in the first year, just to cover the costs of the can, delivery, and removal, and all that kind of stuff. I mean, kind of see the growth over the years since we started. And right now, we're, I think we're actually a little bit higher. We're in the 6,800 level right now, so. The material that can go in is basically yard debris. So if it grows, it goes. It's kind of been our motto, leaves, grass, garden, waste, and small tree limbs. Stuff like that. Basically, anything you grow outside can go in. And so, yeah, obviously, the point of this discussion is whether the council would like to speak, speak to adding food waste into the yard debris as an option. So food waste itself is, has been a big target more recently. It's trying to eliminate it from the landfill. So food waste does break down in a landfill and produces methane, which is 25 times as potent as carbon dioxide is, and with causing greenhouse gas, excuse me, emission, excuse me, it's causing climate change because it captures more heat in the atmosphere methane does. So additionally, when we send food and yard waste to the landfill, we're wasting a valuable resource that may put to better use potentially. There's a study here that's in a link as well, as far as Portland did on diverting food waste and the benefits of that. On average, in Oregon household, there is a way 6.3 pounds of food waste per week. About 4.9 pounds goes into the garbage, or curbside compost if someone has it. Food waste is the highest individually categorized waste type in Lynn County's waste stream. So if you were to take a sample of the landfill, just a big chunk of it, 18% of that is food waste. So it's the largest percentage of waste that we generate in Lynn County. So with a new program, here's what would change. Right now, you can put in plant trimmings. If it grows, it goes. But in the future, you'd be able to put in all your plate scrapings from your kitchen, meat, bones, dairy products, baked goods, and kitchen trimmings. So basically, all your plate scraps, including meat and dairy and bones, fish, anything that is food waste can go in. You do not have to put in food waste, obviously, you can just continue to put in your debris. However, there is a caveat that if we switch to adding food waste, the costs essentially will go up overall because we have to assume there is food waste overall in the mix. So, let's go to the next one. Just a brief word on compostable wares, like your, sometimes you see compostable cups and plates and silverware, or, or wares. Oregon composters took a pretty hard stance against accepting any of those types of wares into their compost. There's a letter that went out that was signed by basically all of the food waste composter, commercial composters in Oregon, including the two local processors here. The compostable wares themselves do not create a valuable, they just sort of break down. They're not really the valuable piece of, of what makes compost is for the food, and then adding compostable wares adds a whole nother element of potential contamination with plastic. And it's hard to identify the difference between plastic and a compostable ware in a large pile of waste. So this is. So, um, this would be food only. Outreach program timeline, so we would essentially, uh, it would be implemented July first. Starting in June, uh, we would do instructional posts and videos on the city of Springfield and our websites and Facebook pages. Mail blast all city of Springfield residential customers. Anybody that uses the Santa Pac app, um, which is a, is just a high percentage of customers now. Uh, we'll get a notification about it and a newsletter to all city of Springfield residential customers. Um, and then will be continuation of outreach activities throughout, um, uh, starting in July first and thereafter. Uh, drivers have hopper cams, um, so that they'll note, um, if there's, and when they dump a cart, if there's contamination in it. And then note that on their tablet and then that will go to the customer service department who will reach out and talk to the customer. And then we can also do site visits and just talk to people face to face as well. This is kind of what the graphics looked like in Eugene, so, um, this has been going on, uh, throughout Eugene since twenty nineteen. Food waste and yard debris. Um, we actually started in twenty seventeen, uh, two-year, one thousand customer pilot. So we did that for two years, um, and it worked fine. And so we, uh, so the city of Eugene implemented food waste in the yard debris in twenty nineteen. And since then, it's been a good success, so, um, well, some of the concerns that we had previously. Were really sort of unfounded regarding, we thought, well, is it going to smell? Is it going to create vectors? And, uh, we really haven't seen a lot of those problems and it's really just been sort of a plus for residents. So, uh, here's just more, these are, these are the newsletters that go out with the bills. Like, for example, we can have, uh, Ella Adams, who is a Thurston graduate that won our scholarship for us being a sustainably minded student. We put these in the bills and, and we would promote, uh, the food waste in the yard debris, um, through these. As well as through commercials, we, uh, we work with the M's and sponsor them, so we already reached out and we've. Uh, got Sluggo onboard, uh, to help us develop some commercials. Which, uh, will, will be targeted towards Springfield residents. Couple other cities that also include food waste in the yard debris are Portland and these are what their flyers look like. Uh, there's some basic tips, um, so it is recommended that, you know, if you have this type of food waste that you can, if you want to keep it in your kitchen. To have a little tub. To, you know, you can bag it, but then the bag itself can't go into the food waste. Clean it regularly, sprinkle baking soda at the bottom of your yard debris cart to keep odors down. And the reason why, I, I think the main reason why we haven't seen many issues is this mix. So it will go in with yard debris during the summer months especially. And so it mixes in, it's a little liquid sort of soak in with the yard debris. Then the winter months, it's just not that much of an issue, um, just because of the cold. So these are some recommendations that we'll, uh, recommend. And just some common FAQs that we'll develop as well. So cities of Portland, C L E Jean, Bend, and many others have been practicing for years. This is the city of Springfield website for recycling, which is robust. Um, City Springfield does a great job. Steering residents towards all the information that's available. Uh, we also have our Waste Wizard. Which is on the Santa Pac site and on, on the app where you can type in any material in the area in Springfield and you can find out. Uh, where it's recyclable. And that will of course be included with the food waste. Sort of a, a way the driver will, he'll tag a cart. We have these called these hoops tags, and so he'll tag a cart if there's a problem and he'll write on here what the problem was, so. If there was like garbage bags in it or something like that, he would write garbage bags on here and, uh, and leave that also behind on the cart. And, uh, this is just the final one, just other promotional things we do. I apologize, that's my dog. Sorry about that. So, um, yeah, so this is just another way that we do community events and outreach and so we'll, uh. And we're open to anything else the city of Springfield might have in mind for us to do as far as outreach. So that's kind of the, uh, food waste, uh, little presentation pitch that I came up with on that. Maybe to answer any questions on that. Um, now the rate for this, um, which I just sent to Sam, because we just got some. Updated information on yard debris disposal. So I sent this in a, uh, updated this letter and we actually just. Got this updated information today, so apologize for the change in this, but, uh, basically. It's, it's going to be a good change if you do end up opting for food waste. Uh, the yard debris itself, um, disposal is actually going up. From twenty-four dollars a ton to twenty-eight dollars a ton effective May first. We're going to delay and pass through on that until July. But, uh, so what that means is that, um, the yard debris rate is going to twenty-eight dollars a ton. Regardless if, uh, food waste is included or not. And that's the latest information that we have from the processor. When food waste is included, there could, there could be additional, additional, um, contamination fees and so forth. But, so, we kind of stepped back and looked at what that does to the rates. So if you don't want to include food waste, it would be, uh, we would request. Increase of forty-seven cents per month to accommodate for the CPI that Sam's going to talk about and the increased yard debris disposal rate. But if you do want to increase, do you want to add food waste, there is some additional costs that, uh, we look to accommodate for, which are. Uh, yard debris, uh, service levels pick up, uh, during the winter months now with food waste included. When people normally don't sell out their carts as much, so it sort of balances that, but now that food waste is included, the set out rate goes up. Total weight is heavier with the addition of food, additional outreach and potential contamination fees, so. If you would like to add food waste, we're requesting is an increase of seventy-five cents per month. And if you would not like to add food waste, we're requesting an increase of forty-seven cents per month. The current rate's six twelve a month, uh, so it would go from, uh, six fifty-nine without food, six eighty-seven with food. Um, and again, this is a, uh, subscription basis, nothing mandatory, uh, about this, so.
So Aaron, before we, before we open it up to questions, could you read that? The, the forty-seven cents and seventy-five cents is strictly related to the yard waste, right?
Yes, so it's, yeah.
It's six twelve today, it's going to go to six fifty-nine no matter what. And then if we wanted, if we wanted food waste, what was the, what was the second number that you listed?
Six eighty-seven.
Okay.
So it's a difference. Twenty-eight cents.
And, and lastly, in Eugene, how much actual food waste are, 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 are you getting in?
It's not a substantial amount and it really depends on the customer. So some people don't use it at all, some people use it a lot. It really does vary. Like, I've walked through the neighborhoods and then can lifts and. I can't give you an, an exact percentage right now, but it's not like. It's not a super substantial amount, but it is noticeable to those people that want to participate in it.
Okay, Mary Lee.
Yeah, thanks for the information. Um, I had a couple of questions. Where does the, where does the waste go? When, when it's picked up, where does it go?
Uh, we take it to Lane Forest Products.
And it goes into what?
So they process it and turn it back into compost. Another processor in the area, Rexius, uh, does the same and they, they've actually branded it called Love Food Not Waste. So you can go and buy a, a package of local compost that says from Eugene. Lane Forest Products is, uh, geographically a lot closer for us to drop off here in Springfield, so. Uh, that's where we take it. I'm not sure if they have plans for branding on that piece.
Okay, and I'm not sure if this question is for you or for, um, later. And that is, I read in the, in the AIS that, um, that were several inquiries. Um, as to, uh, putting this program into Springfield, and I was curious as to what several meant, how many several was. So I'm not sure if that comes from you or.
Yeah, I, I, Sam might have something, I. You know, probably like for me personally, I've heard from maybe three to five people call in and ask, ask about it. But that doesn't mean that, that people, you know, our customer service department there in Glenwood that answers the phones, they probably got a lot of calls. I actually asked them and they're like, yeah, we do get called, we do request from people that, especially if they moved from Eugene to Springfield. They're like, oh, I can't put it in anymore, so I don't have a quant, an actual number, but they said, yeah, it does happen. Somewhat frequently.
Aaron and I didn't compare names, but about the same amount, five or so, half dozen people have called in to talk about this. Definitely a couple repeats over the years, we've talked about this thing for a year or so now. So maybe a dozen call in through the two of us, I would say. But again, we didn't compare names, maybe it was the same people on both sides.
I, uh, I, I'm, I'm probably okay with, with what's being presented. As long as it doesn't, as long as it's optional. And it's up to the individual as to whether they want to participate or not. But if it ever gets to the point of where the cost for this extends out to the regular general person that doesn't have a yard debris. Container, um, then I would, I would definitely be a no vote. It's, it's. Allowing the option is fine, as long as it's, a person has the option, this one is paying for it. So that's all I had.
Corey.
Thank you. Um, so I am completely and absolutely in favor of this. As someone who does use a yard waste box, uh, yard waste bin and, um, also compost. But not everything can go in our, you know, if you have a compost and you're in a city lot, you can't compost phones or things like that, so. I, I also, I love that it's opt-in. I think it's great. I'm totally supportive of it. My question is, is there a version of this or an option for commercial folks? Because this is tied directly to the yard waste. And I'm wondering if there's any possibility of, you know, of doing something for like our restaurants and our schools and places. To, like, you get that compost and also just, just to like, just add to all the, my signaling on this. I buy the compost too, the Rexius compost that's made from the stuff, so I just am for it completely. And my question is, is there any commercial version?
Uh, yeah, thank you for that question. Um, there is, uh, so we collect, uh, commercial food waste. It's, it's available for collection at restaurants and grocery stores. So, yeah, we have a, a special truck that goes around and can collect that material. It's about, it's, it's, it's somewhat cheaper than garbage, so it's about eighty percent the rate of, uh, commercial garbage. So, uh, customers can take advantage of that.
Great, thank you.
Damian.
All right, how would something like this work in, in apartment complex or duplexes or things like that? Where, could, for example, I mean, I live in, in a, in a complex and I have like a little yard that, you know, I have to maintain and stuff. Who would the fee go to? Would it be like the, would it be something that the, the complex owners need to decide? I mean, how would that work in an apartment complex?
Uh, yeah, thank you for that question. Um, so we actually started this in apartment complex in Eugene. Um, I went out and sort of met with them, uh, to sort of give instructions and that kind of thing. That one in particular, the complex itself pays for the garbage in separate sort of trash enclosures, right? And so it was just added to the bill, but there is other complexes, um, potentially what you're describing. That everybody pays for their own individual, uh, service, is that how yours works? Or the one you're describing works?
No, I was saying that I have to maintain the, the little. Back area that I have and, you know, I think majority of the people, they just throw it in the garbage can, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, so you can have, uh, your, uh, the property manager, the apartment complex, whatever, you can get yard debris cans set up now. Sometimes, like we have one complex that I think has like twenty to twenty-five of them. They just tuck them behind a garage. Most complexes, uh, not most, but a lot of them hire like a garden. A gardener that takes it with them. Um, but yeah, any, uh, apartment complex should be able to set this up. And if you wanted like a centralized location, uh, to set it up in, uh, I can come out and visit. Uh, locations as well to kind of talk through that as well.
Did you have anything else, Damian? Okay, um, the, this.
It's optional, I mean.
All right, so Steve's in. I did have one, one question about the just yard waste bins in general, the one. I guess critique or complaint I get is this time of year, people really looking for it not to be every other week? Have you guys heard that feedback?
I personally haven't, um, it's something that. Yeah, I, I get that because my can, I can fill up when you start mowing your yard every week. And so I definitely understand that, but we, you can get another can, I mean, you can get more than one can. And there's no limit to the number of cans you can get. To change to every week would be a pretty substantial operational, um, change. And environmentally, I'm, I'm, I just have to believe there would be a point of diminishing return on having the trucks come down the road twice as much for that material. So I haven't personally heard of it, um, but we're always open to talking, so.
Yeah, and, and that's kind of where, uh, what I thought it was going to be, right? Like, is that, you know, this time of year, you know, grass is growing at, at, at an inch a week. And everybody's got plenty of yard waste going around, um, as long as you guys are start, you know. I don't know what the solution is, but starting to sort of think about it for the future, then that, that's good. Uh, Corey, you have anything else?
Um, I was just, you took it down this road and now we're talking about our personal trash usage. I was going to say for us, it's like the late summer and fall when we're doing a lot of garden cleanup that we're just like. We have like backup piles and we're like, if it came every week, we'd have to like wait two weeks for a backup pile to put in our pile and. Yeah, but anyway, I really appreciate it and appreciate the whole program and I know not everybody uses it. But for those of us who do, it's, I, it's a key part of our waste management.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Councilor Riley, and I would also, we do locally have some good. Uh, outlets to, if you're able to haul material to a land forester or Rexius, it's pretty, it's, can be convenient to do that. For some people, not for everyone. So thank you for that.
Okay, um, I think we're good on the food waste program, so I've, I've seen it, I think same. We still need to go back and just talk about general fee increases.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so why don't we move on to that?
You want to unshare your screen there? I don't have a fancy slideshow, this will be, be more of a discussion for everyone. Just briefly looking ahead, we'll just kind of looking for a thumbs up, thumbs down right now. I'll bring the rest of the fees to you all next week. And then in three weeks, we'll have the public hearing and the formal adoption, so this is just seeking guidance. So for the rest of the fees, um, Santa Pac has proposed this year a five percent increase. So on the most commonly used thirty-five gallon cart, this is about ninety-seven cents. So from nineteen dollars and forty cents to twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents, this is again the most commonly used cart. This does include a three point four percent increase from the Lane County, uh, tipping fee. This is a fee they pass on through us, um, that's part of our franchise, we take this on. At the time of this writing, uh, Santa Pac kind of followed similar guidance I had a few months ago of looking at Western Region CPI, that B C sized cities. That was sitting at closer to nine and a half. I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if it's ten percent by now. But in talking with staff and hearing previous guidance from council, Santa Pac didn't want to do. A burdensome rate on the city of Springfield and was able to work through and look, talk to us about a five percent increase. Looking back last year, um, in the kind of the heart of COVID was about a two point one percent increase. Year before that, there was no CPI increase from Santa Pac. So similar to this rest of the city's master fees, slow and steady increases, um, rather than sharp increases one year at a time. Aaron kind of alluded to the biggest change is that, that food waste change, we were told about an hour and a half ago of this. So again, it'll be, um, just about a forty-seven cent increase for yard debris cans now. And if you want to include the food waste, seventy cent and seventy-five cent increase. On our total list of fees, that only covers two of the cans that are affected by this late notice. The rest of your information packets are up to date with the current fees. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to talk about this. Staff with Springfield met with Santa Pac to go over the numbers. Keeping in mind their biggest cost drivers are, uh, wages and gas. And both of those have seen sharp increases over the years. Um, we felt pretty comfortable with that five percent. And bringing that forth for you all to make sure we're all on the same page. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to the group for questions or comments and we can talk through whatever we need to for the next twenty minutes.
All right, any questions? I mean, it seems pretty straightforward, so. People are looking, look like they're good here. And I think the, the only thing I think is important to point out is that part of that is. How, how Santa Pac charges back the, the tipping fee, so the, the increase that comes from the county, right? So I think that's an important distinction when we talk about rate increases for, uh, when it comes to, uh, Santa Pac. Is that some of that money is just simply passed through from the county.
Thank you for that, Mary. Yeah, so there is, the, each individual fee is broken out by Santa Pac's. Thank you for that, Mary. Yeah, so there is, each individual fee is broken out by Santa Pac's operational costs and the tipping fee from the county. The tipping fee is proportionally smaller than than Santa Pac's needs. So while it may show a three percent increase, the overall impact isn't as big felt on the total fee.
So Sam, I think we're good here. So if this, I think this is ready for for the public hearing when you get ready for it.
Great. That's wonderful news and I appreciate your feedback. Thank you everyone.
Perfect.
Thank you everyone as well. Thank you.
Good senior. So we have a joint meeting that is seven o'clock. Are we staying on this link? Okay, so there is a separate link for the joint meeting and when we come back, we will have our friends from the county commission with us. I will, I'm going to adjourn us, but we will be back at seven o'clock. We're adjourned. Thank you.